I got Chuck to get it from him. So, um...
Pretty happy. Practice.
So she's saying you don't have to be very angry. This is just Chuck's email to her. That's just your email to Jeanette.
There's... This goes with that.
Oh.
All right, we're in the drawing box.
Okay, everybody ready?
You'll hear okay?
Yeah. Lisa, you got your thing on?
Sorry.
Call of duty on Wednesday, August 17th. It's to order at 7:00. Roll call.
Erica Pardon.
Sean Harley.
Randy Snead.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Malaney.
George Knoll and Angela Resendez will not be here tonight. They were stamped for pledge to leave the street. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes from August 6, 2022, regular session.
Motion for three minutes from August 3rd.
Oh, no. Sorry. Minutes are from August 3rd.
August 3rd, okay, it's on the paper. I need to go. Yes, August 3rd, I'm sorry.
I read it in there yesterday.
Oh, I didn't. Sorry.
Yeah, I read it. I just can't find it today.
Do we have a motion?
I already did.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from August 3rd, 2022, regular session. Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Minutes passed. Citizens input. Way to go.
Well, today was trash pickup day, wasn't it? My trash was not picked up today, and just about everybody in my neighborhood was not picked up today.
It was also large item cleanup, so they probably didn't get to the whole town. They'll get it tomorrow.
Usually I get a reach alert or something on your Facebook.
I did not get anything saying they didn't finish, but the last two times that we've had large item pickups, that's what's happened. So I assume that they didn't get through the whole town today.
Okay.
But if they don't pick it up by tomorrow, please let me know.
Yeah.
I will definitely let you know. My can is full, and I have several overflowing neighborhood cans.
I get it. I can't force them to do it, so...
I know. But we're back to... I mean, see Derek shaking his head. I will tell you, I use the same waste disposal company at work. We're trying to get out of that contract because they're not upholding up there, and that's a commercial entity.
Yep.
They're not upholding their deal down here. Why are we dealing with these people still? This is the third time for my own personal residence.
Yeah.
Okay? I said it was recycling can full for a month because he skipped the whole half a month of recycling. I still paid a full bill.
I get it.
Okay? I'm just saying, and I know Mr. Jones is working on this on behalf of the town, but this is getting ridiculous, people.
Paul, you're not wrong. Um, I think it was, I want to say May, but this year that we sent a letter to our public, um, kind of, and it kind of outlined, and Lisa done a good job of like, every time there was a complaint that was called in, they noted that, and we sent them the list of that, those complaints. I know that she's had meetings with them, and I've seen stuff in the paper, in the Plymouth Pilot, about other municipalities having the same problems. I'm not saying that's an excuse, but I'm saying that I think the council's aware that like, the service is not the greatest, and we have to consider though, or these folks have to consider other options, and if those are a new trash service, so be it. But I understand. I don't live here, but I...
I understand that it's a long process to get this straightened out, but it seems like the last six months with this company has just been unreasonable.
So the last...
And I know it's not Derek's job, it's the council and take care of this, but...
Good. Last meeting that I had with the, uh, his name is James Mitros, he is like the regional director. He said that they had transferred out the guy that was running Culver to a different position, and they had a new guy that was going to be running Culver, and that he was going to bear with him. There was going to be a couple of weeks of changeover, but that they were adjusting this new manager into, and we should see an improvement. Now, if we don't see an improvement, then Derek will look at the contract, and then the council will vote to, you know, get out of that contract, and then we'll go through a bidding process, and that's what will happen. So, but there's also not a lot of companies out there. So I don't want to go picking up trash, that's not...
Paul, you're not alone. I have also brought it to attention here, I have pictures and notes in my phone of my unhappiness with the trash company myself. I just read the other night, you pay up the book, Paz is having the same issues. Urbans having the issues, I've seen it in paper. Plymouth's having issues. They've all had meetings with them, discussed it, they've all promised them they're going to be better.
Well...
They're still having problems. Matter of fact, the Pazes said, you know, they already said, oh, the service might get better, but we're still bidding it out this year. The problem was is we went into a contract with them based on, and we just have not gotten that contract what it's supposed to be out of them. It's not been good, but we are in a contract, so we have to follow that until we have a way to get out of it the right way.
I understand.
The big thing, Paul, is they don't have a lot of competition doing the, with the kind of equipment stuff that they have. There are some other people picking up in the countries and dip, but they couldn't handle the town. And, you know, with no competition, they don't have anybody to kind of force them to do better. Yeah, they, I see, they make a lot of messes. I've seen they're breaking cans, they're just, I've seen cans, they drop them, you know, they, there's a lot of problems, so don't ever feel alone.
I understand there's problems, and they're having this problem with even their commercial customers, like I said.
Yeah, so anyhow, we'll do all that we maybe can.
It's not just residential stuff.
Right.
But, okay, now, my neighbor's going to wonder what to do with their trash cans. I didn't receive any guidance from the town. I'm not blaming Lisa, she didn't know about it. My point is, we've had this problem.
Because what we usually rely on, Paul, is they will, if they can't get everything picked up, they normally notify Lisa, and Lisa sends a alert out. That's what happened last month or the month before. Lisa sent a...
No, I'm not blaming Lisa. I'm just saying, these people don't know what to do.
Obviously, they didn't communicate to us so we could send a notice out to everybody as where we're at.
Wait a minute.
Uh, they didn't pick mine up either, but they picked up the recycle, but they didn't pick up the trash. So I called, you know, and she said, if you don't, if they don't pick it up by 3:30, give us another call. I called again, and lo and behold, it's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I always call.
I always did not tell them anything today, so we didn't call it in, you know?
Well, she said she would text them.
Right, but I mean...
So, I mean...
Yeah, but I have nothing from them.
I don't think they used a garbage truck. I would have heard it. I think somebody did it with a pickup truck or something, because, you know, but it was gone. And I've done that before too, because they, they picked up Lynn's house and just went right on by mine. So I called in, and, you know, they came right and got it. So I think you have to notify somebody.
Last thing I'll say, and again, this has been an ongoing concern, um, there's a point where you can declare termination of the contract, and then if you do that, okay, that's what we've done. But then you have to consider, what does the town do?
Yeah.
And so that is a practical consideration, that it will take a fair amount of time to find another service provider to do that, and I understand the town's not happy. We've heard numerous complaints, and again, Lisa had a list that was like that long, eight and a half by eleven paper. We terminate the contract. We've done that, and now what? And so those are, those are factors in making that determination.
The good news is that they did pass a state law where you don't have to bid it out, you have to just get three quotes, you know what I mean? They started July 1st.
All the same, doesn't really change the vote that we're in. I mean, they're just...
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, um, I called in a couple days back to, um, complain about vulgarity of flags and signage that's hanging throughout the town. The clerk told me that you guys couldn't really do it, and he says freedom of speech, and she is right, kinda, um, because you're government, and government can't necessarily dictate what citizens say. So I'm coming in, because I'm a citizen, not government, and, and voicing my opinion that, that this should be looked at a little better because vulgarity is not covered under First Amendment rights. And I harken this back to a case I remember hearing, this officer, the law, was kayaking on vacation, apparently having a horrible day of it. Anyways, it led him to release a bunch of vulgarities on the river. A mother and her children were downstream, could hear this. Well, it, she prosecuted, and it went on up the chain to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court said, no, he can't do that, that her rights, their rights were violated because of his swearing, and that, and that vulgarity is not covered under First Amendment rights. So with that, um, it led me to, obviously, knowing that led me to call the clerk to find out if there's something I could do to have these signs changed. You know, and the other thing is too, I don't like the fact that when we have people coming into town seeing extremely coarse language, just hanging on people's flagpoles and signage and windows, and it's just not a good look.
Your name, sir?
Gary Schu.
Gary?
Schu.
Schu?
Yeah.
How do you spell that last name?
S-C-H-U.
Can I tackle this?
Would you please?
Okay.
I'm gonna keep my mouth shut.
Let's start by saying that, um, I appreciate what you're saying. I have four kids, uh, they're from 10 to 17 years old, and it's not just Argus, but it's throughout the community. Uh, you drive by that sign, and my first thing is, I, they just don't see the sun. We've never discussed it, but I appreciate your concern. I knew that there was going to be an issue this evening about this, this fact or this matter, and I did 15, 20 minutes of looking, talked to the county plan director, and what I can tell you from, again, very, very limited research, and you got to remember that the council has to direct me to do anything one way or the other, um, but my research kind of indicates that it's, no, that vulgarity is something, especially in political speech, that can be permitted. And the case that you cite, I, just out of curiosity, I'd like to see that case and know what that was about. But there have been several cases that have gone to the United States Supreme Court. There's not really a clear definitive bright line about exactly what is and is not permitted. That's the one takeaway that I, that I had from this. But I, again, share your sentiment that I just don't appreciate seeing that. Regardless, there is First Amendment protection about, I can, I can say what I want, so long and, and especially, political speech is especially protected. And that's really what you have, I think, in terms of what you're complaining about when you see signs that say some expletive to a political leader. Those are the ones that are probably going to be the most upheld in terms of a person's right to express what they believe or what they feel. However, there is also a competing interest in terms of what we would call a nuisance action. The town does those from time to time, and that's something that's basically, it's offensive to either your vision, your hearing, smell, that could be a nuisance action as well. And so you have, on one hand, what we would call that nuisance action, on the other hand, you have what's called this protection of free speech. And most of the things that I've seen so far, the free speech trumps the nuisance actions. And, um, I think it was back in the spring of this year, a lady in Goshen had some signs in her yard that were at this, at that, and I really don't even remember who they were directed at, but the, the city or the town of Goshen took that out, and I don't know where that's at, but that's not even what we would call precedent, which means regardless of how that turns out, it's not really binding on the town of Argus or Plymouth or anybody else. But it, it is interesting that one town decided, yeah, okay, we're not going to tolerate this. And I think for a lot of the reasons that you would, you would talk about. But in terms of what we would call the law, in terms of a statute, or in terms of precedence from another case, it's lacking on that, in terms of specifically what is permissible, what is not. And I can tell you that in terms of what the town can do, we can prohibit or regulate signs or flags or any kind of expressions in terms of, like, the location of them, in terms of you're too close to the road, or the size of them, you know, you got a 40-foot by 30-foot billboard. We can do that, but when it comes to content, in terms of what is it that the sign says, that's where a lot of times, it's a town or a public citizen, they run into trouble in terms of trying to prohibit or regulate that because it is that, again, freedom of expression. The other thing I can tell you is that there is this nuisance action that I talked about, and that is something that's open and available to everyone. It's not just something that the town would have to take up or undertake. That's something that if it's, if it's your neighbor, or if it's something that you drive by on the road every day on your way to work, or you've got kids in your vehicle, you can address that, and you can take that to court, and to be honest with you, I do wish you luck, and I mean that sincerely, okay? But that's something that I don't know where you're going to land, I don't know where you're going to wind up with that, but I appreciate your concern.
To jump into the weeds a little bit deeper on that, um, I completely understand and I'm on board with the political speech of things, and somebody using vulgarity to, you know, their disdain for whoever's in office and things like that. But with that being said, uh, the one sign that is up, it's down by my house, I live over on South Grove, and it's over there by the grain elevator. The, the signage that's, that's hanging there is provocative, and it promotes a reaction. It's not just cursing. The sign, the, the flag states, obviously, they're supporting an individual who used to be president, and, but then it follows up with, um, blank your feelings. So that is, to me, that is directed at wanting a reaction. It's not, you know, like, the other gentleman or the other family that has this flag over here that just says blank Biden. I, I get that, you know, it's this directed at a sitting president.
Right.
You know, they have that right, although he's not running right now, so is it actually political? I mean, he is a sitting president, but he's not running, he's not campaigning, so...
It is. Definitely is.
So there's that, but with this other flag, you know, it's, 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 the terminology that they're using in that flag is wanting a reaction by saying that. By, by, if I was to walk up to anybody on the street that was having whatever issues, and I was just, you know, uncaring, um, I guess maybe it touches a bit of a chord because of the disability, and if somebody walked up to me and started making fun of my disability just because I'm disabled, they're, they're doing that to try to get a reaction out of me, more than likely.
I don't know that that's going to be a measuring stick in terms of what is or is not permissible. And again, I understand where you're coming from, um, and I would, again, tell you that it's up to the council, what, if anything, that they want to do with any of those signs, flags, what have yous. But I will tell you that this, from what I've seen, kind of a, um, not a overly successful endeavor in terms of towns or anybody to try to prohibit those things, but again, as a private citizen, you are entitled to do that, and I can give you the Indiana code sites if you would like.
I can find those.
Okay?
I have actual work with that.
And it's, again, something that's like, I, I appreciate and share your concern, but I, I don't know that it's something that the town, that would be, something that they could potentially be involved in a, a long, expensive litigation project, and is that what they want to undertake? Now, it's up to the council not need to decide.
Yeah, that's, that's where I ran into the same literature as a government entity. It really gets dicey when it becomes government on an individual, you know, limiting rights and things like that. It is, it's just not a good idea. But like I said, I'm coming in as a private citizen, um, asking for something to be done because of the, you know, the offensiveness of it.
And I would tell you, as a private citizen, I'd be very interested to see how that shakes out if you decide to pursue that.
Well, this is step one, obviously. I have to start somewhere.
Yep.
Yes, Chuck.
As a town, I think the first thing that I would look at is to see where the signs are placed and if they're actually on private property or not. If they're in the public right of way, we can remove those immediately. What I saw today that said something about Trump, whatever, it appeared to me that they were in the right of way. Now, I had other things to do, so I didn't come back and check where that's at, but we have, we have the road, and then we have extension that is the right of way that belongs to the town.
The terrace, the terrace on each side of the street.
The exact location of this is what?
Right across from the grain elevator is the one that I am...
Now, when you say right across...
It's, uh, directly across from...
To the west.
To the...
So it's probably...
Yeah, directly to the west of the grain elevator.
Lincoln and south.
Yeah, right next to the, uh, there's a storage barn there that's been up for sale. It's, the house is right next to it.
Right on the corner?
Nope, the other way.
So just to the north of the long white storage...
Yes.
I'll drive by there tonight, take a picture, see where it's at.
Yeah.
And again, size, location, those are things, regardless of content, regardless of what the sign says, can be regulated by the town, but if that person takes the sign 10 feet back, and...
It's all right.
Okay. I don't think that's accomplishing your objective, and I understand, again.
Yeah. Like I said, I got to start somewhere.
Yeah, just like Chuck said, you know, if it's in the right of way, we can pull it out right now, but there's nothing saying he can't put it right back in off the right of way.
Yeah, hang it on his porch if he wants to, you know.
So there's one down here hanging on, I mean, it doesn't say it like that, it just has former president's, like, name on it, but it's not vulgar化的. I mean, it's a call...
And, you know, that's why I talked to the clerk about, is like, if they want to put that gentleman's name all over the property, then that's what they could do, that, there's no issue there at all.
I personally, all my years, can't remember seeing this kind of stuff carry on after an election so long, and all, I just can't, I don't, I don't get it. It's ridiculous. That's me.
Is that, but we will check it out, sir.
I'll go by it, take a picture, and send to lawyer and to everybody.
Anything else, or is that pretty much? Hmm, no. Probably talk to the council, I have to leave.
About what?
Uh, well, I guess, no need now, but, um, so you're just going to drag it out of me. I am looking at replacing Angie's spot. It's not a thing yet, but, um, I guess she's going to be resigning.
The council has nothing to do with that. You have to see, uh...
Shiloh.
Shiloh.
No, he's, he's just letting you know.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. He's a friendly...
Yeah, I, I haven't talked to Shiloh lately, so I can't tell you...
I don't know that Angie has notified her yet, but, you know, like I said...
Well, that's, I didn't want to put the cart in front of the horse. I talked with Shiloh, and, yeah, she's like, as long as there's nobody else that's going to oppose that...
Right.
Then there's not going to be an issue. So, but we'll kind of cross our eyes, or cross our p's without our i's this Saturday at the meeting.
Absolutely. Yep.
I had a plan to go to that meeting this time, but I don't hit all of them, but we have to move my son back to college, so I'm not going to be there.
That's what I'm doing, Sarah, you too, is moving, and I'm supposed to be there for...
Yeah, we're going to be going all weekend, moving him back to college.
Will we take notes?
I don't make vermin, because my job, I'm usually busy, and I was actually going to go to this one, and then when I seen what the date was, I was like, oh, man.
Yeah, all right. Pam, do you have anything?
No.
Anyone else? Any other citizen input? If not, move on to attorney report.
Couple things, uh, just to let the council know, uh, we're working on basically an issue with a railroad track crossing their West Street with Jamie, balls in my court, and there's a lot of balls in my court right now in terms of things to do for the town. But that's something that we're working on in terms of getting that closed, but also it's an agreement to basically have them do some other work on other crossings. Also Deerfield, it's really, I think that that did get recorded?
No. The park board meeting needs tomorrow night, and then...
No, Deerfield will be redeveloped.
Oh, no, I did not record it because I'm waiting for, um, I was just going to drop them both off at the same time.
Okay, and that's fine.
You told me to give them a view, right?
That whole process is moving forward, just because I know the council's interested in the development of that, and Mark's kind of chewing on my butt about, let's go with some stuff, and so we're going to chat with him tomorrow. Other two things that we do want to take a look at are, I'll start with an easier one. I think first is the McGowan property at 711 North Michigan. We sent him a letter, uh, back on July the 12th, and there were basically just stuff sitting around, junk trash, et cetera. That 30 days that we provided for him in that letter has come and gone, and I think in talking with Chuck, that things are okay or acceptable at this point. There's a little concern that maybe things will change in the next 30 or 60 days, because it kind of just comes and goes, but as for right now...
At this point, well, he moved, he moved all his stuff out, he's out working, but yeah, like you, I saw it, it's straightened out, but why do we do?
Well, we hope that...
Wait until it comes out of the line.
And we hope that because of the fact that it caught the town's attention, we sent a letter, that he would understand, like, okay, that's not acceptable, and hopefully we won't see it again. Maybe that won't be the case, but this, it's one of those time will tell, but as for now, I don't think there's anything more we do with this other than just close it.
Does the town, does the town have any recourse? You know, like, I guess the question is, is, you know, we hit this as a, as a one-time, like, kind of instance, and we, you know, and we have the same recurring, I mean, and it takes so much to go through all these processes. I mean, is there anything we can, to where we don't have to go through all the, I mean, we just get right after him if that gets back in that shape again, or do we have to start all over from step one again?
We do, and you always have to think about this from the perspective of a judge. Well, but, okay, listen, okay, you always have to think about this from the perspective of a judge that would hear what's going on. We can talk about, like, this was the fifth time that we sent letters and things don't happen, but at the end of the day, if there's compliance based on a letter, that's what the town's after, is compliance. And if it ever does come in front of court, yes, we can talk about those things, but it's really not relevant, and judge wants to know right now what's the problem, what's not been corrected or fixed. So I understand it's aggravating to keep coming back, but, uh, in terms of any other recourse or, no?
I'm just, yeah, I just, I'm just curious, it just seems like a huge waste of...
There are fines and tickets that can be issued, and we can pursue those as well, but short of that, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Keep it clean, take care of it. If you don't, you'll hear from us again.
Thank you, Derek.
Sure. The other one is the Beers property at 110 Logan Street, and... And I think Chuck provided a little bit of update here. I know that Sean maybe went out and took some pictures.
Corey, actually, and Corey and I both went as, and I sent those pictures to the council and you this week.
Okay.
My perspective of it is, is it's a hundred percent better than it was. He's going to the yard at least. Maybe done a little cleaning up. There is still some definite concerns there, and I talked to Chuck a little bit before the meeting tonight, just one-on-one. One of my concerns was, is there's some young sapling maples and other deciduous trees growing up really close to the foundation, to where it's actually a building issue, I would say. Chuck agreed with me. I think there's a lot of trimming of brush that needs to go on on this property yet. The fence line that surrounds the property is all grown up in jimson weed. There's still quite a bit of vegetative type work to clean up there on that property before I would say, you know, I would mow the next one. That's me.
So, you gotta, again, this is where I'm gonna say, I've seen the pictures, okay? And in terms of, do you want to stand in front of a judge, and you will be my witness from the town if this is the position, but to say that that is not acceptable in terms of vegetation or nuisance and things of that nature. And it's kind of one of those things, I think we kind of need to focus on the worst of the worst. And if there's, and you said a hundred, I don't know if there's a hundred percent compliance. But what we sent a letter about was a roof, I believe.
That is done.
That's done, that's taken care of. I don't think it's, it's bad or out of line to just say, hey, you know, there's some other things here in terms of vegetation that maybe you need to address. But if, again, there has been compliance when the town has reached out to Mr. Beers, or the Beers failing. So I certainly hope that you still go down that road and you think in that fashion.
Kind of what we discussed tonight, maybe Chuck and Corey possibly together approach him, and some of our concerns still there.
Keeping it back in your mind, like, at some point, if you do stand in front of a judge, you don't want a judge saying, you know, the town's crying wolf, that isn't that big of a deal. And we don't want to set that kind of precedent. Because we do a fair amount of these cases in court that are like, those need attention.
I just, you know, we had a neighbor sitting in here, and I looked down that property, and I wouldn't want to be his neighbor.
I hear you, but again, if that neighbor thinks that that's that bad, he has that option as well, just like we explained to Mr. Chu. You take it up and you follow your, your nuisance action and see where you go with it. Yeah, any, any, any person can do that, so. So that's what I had to report.
Okay.
I made a motion to accept the attorney report.
Did Chuck have anything he wanted to add on these others with Derek right now?
No, I'll wait till my time and then.
Okay. I'll second your motion then.
We have a motion, Andy Second, to accept attorney report. Can you throw your comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The vote for your report has passed. Other old business. You want to come in here or you want to go to new business?
No, he's got it on playing director down below.
Oh, way down there. Okay.
Way down there.
So any other new business that needs to be brought out? No? Department head reports, please.
So all I have is what the, what I have is in my report. My report referenced a code enforcement violation. That wasn't taken care of as of today, so I just sent a certified ticket in the mail.
So you wrote, can I think his name?
Phil.
Phil Llewellyn, a ticket for that tall grass. And they came back and he said it would be cut Monday?
No, I talked, I gave him a warning.
Okay.
Then I talked to him, and he said he didn't have to do it. He would take it to court. And he called me back and said he would be done Monday.
Right.
And it wasn't, as of today, it wasn't done.
So what are we doing?
And I think he's also been in Talkalisa, his son, who's all bent out of shape.
He had Matt Llewellyn come in and tell me that it was zoned ag, and that he did not have to, he showed me where he's paying ag taxes on it. And then he didn't have to follow those guidelines because it's ag property, but that is not true. If you look at our zoning map, it is zoned business too.
So it's not zoned ag. What he's done is got the assessor to assess it as ag.
Yeah.
Instead of, it's zone B2.
So he's paying cheap taxes on what he should be?
He was able to, and I don't know how, because it's not zoned ag.
Well, maybe somebody needs to make the assessor aware.
Well, regardless of zoning, what are we trying to enforce here?
Lowing the lot.
Okay, under an ordinance or under?
Under the code enforcement.
Yep.
Code enforcement.
It hasn't been known, no, there's like scrutches. Under a Town of Argus code of ordinances or under the zoning?
The coordinate, code of ordinances.
Okay, so is it within corporate limits?
Yes.
Okay, then yeah, that's fine.
And the, I believe the code says you can't have it more than eight inches. So that is where we're at.
I think it's six, but is it six or eight?
It's fifty inches.
That is everything.
This is all feet.
Well, when I'm here now, Corey, Corey didn't do anything wrong there, I mean.
Right.
He's low lot.
So welcome.
You, you don't do anything right now.
Don't do anything?
Corey's doing it strong, let him do it.
Do we do the same thing with the Burger King property?
Yeah, we do.
The Burger King property, we had an agreement with Tom Overmeyer. He had come to a council meeting a while back and said that he would not let it grow more than eight inches. If it is more than eight inches, Corey knows that he has the authority to.
Does he remember if I sent him a ticket this year or if he didn't got moved?
Yeah, so, I mean, we were following the rules, so we didn't bend out for anybody.
Well, process. So what you have there? Utilities, Jamie?
Um, I just want to talk to you about this grain tile. There was a meeting Monday at the county, and we discussed this, it's probably been a month ago or so. Building our buildings, it was gonna be a problem on setbacks with this tile. So what we did is we, we agreed to take that tile over from the east part of that to First Street. And that's what they agreed to. Well, they looked at more of that tile, and they want to give us the tile from First Street to West Street. It actually runs under our building. There was no permit, there was nothing done when this building was built with it, so. So they don't want, I mean, if it ever broke, whatever, they don't want to be responsible for it, so. Um, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I don't have it on this man, but the one I gave you before, there's a tile that runs along First Street that this twenty-inch tile runs into towards Walnut Street. So there's very little, if anything, that runs under the building through that tile. So we can contest that if we want to, but I think we just let it go. I don't think it's something for us to really be concerned about. Really, it's, it's probably mostly a dead tile anyway. We even dammed it up halfway, so the twenty-inch tile, we, we poured concrete in it. Probably when we built this building and dammed it up, six, eight, ten inches in there, so. You know, if you get a big flow of water, some might go through there. For the most part, it all gets redirected through the bigger tile. So, Lisa probably hasn't got the letter yet, but there will be a letter coming on this for the next meeting if we want to contest it. But like I said, I, I don't think it's a problem. I think we just let it go. It does, it handles what we want it to do so that we can, you know, build those buildings like what we planned. The other thing is on that, that twenty-inch tile that runs in that alley to First Street, that's all just been upgraded this last year. So we, we should be good for a long time. So I just wanted to give you an update on where we're at.
That's, that's the piece that you worked with the county on fixing when we, when we started working in there.
Yeah, and when, we put taps in there and everything, so when we build this building, we're gonna put the gutter straight into it and all that stuff. So it being ours, we can just do it. So I, like I said, I don't see it being a problem at all, nothing to worry about.
Do, uh, do we need a motion or anything to accept that to, accept, taking that over?
It's not our, it's not our tile. They're doing it.
Okay.
It's all, I mean, they're handling it. If, if we want to contest it, we need to go to that meeting. But if, if we're okay with it, which I, I recommend we take it, I mean, it's, it's not a big problem, and we just let it happen.
Yeah, I have a tendency to.
Sounds like we'll see something down the way, a little bit from the county to vacate that.
And, and it may.
Yeah. Be my guidance.
Okay.
Um, everything else is going good. You've probably seen, uh, B and B was here. They started the EMS expansion. They came in and hauled a lot of, flattened that ground out. They're getting ready to go. We're still waiting on them to go to move that gas line. So that's kind of been the holdup on this whole project up to this point, so. We've had a date that they're gonna come move it a couple times, and it comes and goes, and B and B's staying out. I'm pretty good to get that done. I guess there's a plan they should come in the next week to do it, but we'll, we'll see. I won't believe it till I see it.
Jamie, I have a question. A couple meetings ago, we, we discussed that over there, where the buildings are gonna come together, about that roof tie-in, and we, I think we kind of left it that maybe he was gonna investigate what it would take to just bring that together right with a peak roof instead of that flat roof that we're after place at all times. Have you ever looked into that at all?
I don't have the numbers on it. We've discussed it, but I don't, I don't have the numbers on it.
I just was curious if you had any chance?
Yeah, I think what we decided, we'll do half of it. The question is, do we do the whole thing? So, uh, is your price on it?
Well, I, I just know the problem that that roof's been in the past.
Yeah.
You know, tie, if we have to tie into it, there's, that's my, yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's probably the time to do it. And, and I think we fixed the issues we had with that building. The reason we put the rubber roof on, so it's probably the time to do it. Other than that, the only other thing I have is Deerfield's moving along pretty good. We got a house going up out there. We're working on a little bit of the storm tile. Once we're done with that, we should be done with phase one on that. I'll be coming around, putting electric in, so we're working on that. I've got everything on order, so when that comes in, we'll probably get started. But again, everything's going good out there. We've got some stone down there, starting to, starting to look like something.
Good? Yep. Also, any other questions?
Nope.
I'm gonna look into reports. Economic director.
You got it?
I got it.
Uh, the only thing that he didn't mention, we're trying to get a, and this isn't final. We're trying to get a walkthrough with the architect and the engineering firm for the downtown square. So they wanted to walk through with the contractor. Uh, one thing we'll have, and I told you that before, all of you, if you see something you don't like, make a note. Because we will have a final walkthrough with the grant administrator, the contractor, and the engineering firm. So I don't know, they didn't say much more than that, just walkthroughs. So if there's something you don't like and you've seen it, I guess let Jamie and I know before we go to that. But probably, they still got paving supposed to be this next week. I think some of that kind of relies on when they come to pay for us. They'll do the final.
House comes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know what their deadline is. We've, we've got some more paving to do, so I don't know if they'll incorporate with that, but we're, we're probably a month, six weeks out before we're ready for that, so. I don't know if they'll try to get in here and get that done before that.
Hopefully, but they've got the rest, they did the rest of the concrete this week, fixed that drainage issue.
Yep.
Everything's coming along. Um, concrete rocks are leaving. That's not what I think was thought, so they're going back. So I, I, I think those were intended for sitting, and they're not, I'm gonna sit on them even if I had work clothes on, so. We'll come up with, and I thought we had decided at the meeting, we'll come up with some type of seating to put down there.
I thought we had, and that one thing, there were a bunch of benches, wasn't it?
Well, there are benches down, there's benches on the outside. He had put these around the trees, I think, thought people would sit on them, but that's not, not inside there. I had thirty of them, although I don't know where they were to stick them all because, but we looked at some seating areas today, and we'll come up with something and show it to you. And for what those cost, we got almost a thirty, thirty-one thousand dollar credit. So we'll be able to find lots of seating for thirty-one thousand dollars.
I have only one, only one concern that I have up there, and I'd like to see the progress that's going on, but the, the trees that they put in there in that, in that seating triangle, I call that seating triangle. I just, the trees they put in there didn't have very big leaf surface, and they won't have, even as they mature. I just expected to be trees that would possibly give a little bit more shade there than what those will, or. I guess I wouldn't have thought about it so much if they'd have done a mixture of the trees in there. They put the all same type in that one area.
Yeah, I'm not sure yet. That's one thing on the list when he comes. I think he's coming tomorrow.
I, I haven't.
I don't know. When we get with the, because that was one question, they, all those trees have irrigation. But as you can tell, two out of the fifteen are already dying, so that was one of my already complaints, so. I can't tell you on the size, what they're, what they're gonna be. I'm not the tree man, so I.
Well, I'm sorry, I just, I just.
No, I meant what kind they're even there. I'm sure they picked something that doesn't look as deep as you think, just because of where it is. But I'm sure it should go deeper than what I, because right now, I mean, when you see renderings, that doesn't quite meet the picture, I agree.
I just expected something with a little better shade, possibly else. People can enjoy it in the summer. It's gonna be hot right there.
And I'm not sure how fast it will grow, I'm not.
But even as, like I said, even as that particular tree matures, it doesn't have a big leaf surface.
Well, depending on the time of the day, the sprinklers will come on, keep it cool.
Thanks for the edit. I'm just great, huh?
Our second splashback.
Is that it?
That's all I've got for today.
Alright, land director.
Um, I gave you my list of the property updates. 193 South Michigan, which is next to downtown. The porch has been repaired, the new header posts and fascia have been installed there. That's taken care of. 413 Southwest Street, Irish Enterprises, the building that had been fallen, it was in a pile, it's been removed, taken out of there. Taken care of, and the trash has been moved. Uh, 110 South Logan Street, Barney Beers, new roof has been applied, fascia drip edge has been replaced on the whole building. And then 220 North Yerick, Edward Lytle, addition attached to the front of the house, no permits, no inspections. 304 East Plum Street, Virgin Vila, we sent a letter on May 8th, giving her thirty days to complete and take care of everything. Uh, it's been over a hundred days at this time. So my recommendations are 193 South Michigan Streets in compliance, going to take it off of our list. Uh, 413 Southwest Street in compliance, we'll do a prism of that from our list. 110 Logan Street, Barney Beers, what, he took care of the roof and the structure and all that I had asked him to. There's discussion here about still needing to be cleaned up, trimmed up. What my recommendation would be is that we have code enforcement work with him. He's made a lot of progress there, and I think he just needs somebody to help him know what he should be doing with the rest of it. I think it's just kind of not knowing. And I would be happy to work with code enforcement to go down there and talk with him about that. As far as being in compliance with the, the house, taking it off our list. 220 Yerick Street, um, that started under construction without a permit. Letting know they didn't have a permit, so he applied on July the first for a permit. He has not been issued a building permit because it's not within the setbacks, it's too close to the road. So right now, what he did was completed it without a, without a permit, without any inspections, and it's in the wrong location. My recommendation to that is a letter from the attorney telling him that he needs to remove that from the house. There are other places he can add on to his house, if that's what he wants to do, and still be in compliance. But right where that's at, unless he were to approach the BZA and get a variance of, a variance of setback standards, which is a possibility. Probably would not be my recommendation to the BZA to do that, but he could apply that way. But I think we need to kickstart this and get it going and get it in the right direction. And then 304 East Plum Street. I've gone to the head of the Indiana Association of Building Officials, talked to them about. I've gone to the head of the Indiana Association of Building Officials, talked to them about trailers. A trailer can't be modified, rebuilt or anything done like that unless it goes back to the factory. There are no standards that we have in the building industry to regulate that. There, if you look inside the windows, they've taken everything out from the inside, they're putting walls up, they're changing windows. There's still plywood around some of the windows and around the trailer. My recommendation is that have a letter from the attorney and remove the trailer. We have case law that says that, that's Kohler versus the city of South Bend, talking about when something has not been done, although it could be repairable or fixed and hasn't been done over a long time, that we can still ask for it to be removed. It would be my recommendation to get rid of that trailer. The rest of the property is in decent shape. She could bring something back in if she wanted to, but this just isn't worth it. And with this, so that's all I've got.
Make a motion to accept Chuck's recommendations. Singling out 220 Yerick Avenue, authorizing the attorney to send a letter to the property owner to remove the porch that was put up illegally without the proper permits. And a letter to, from the attorney to the owners of 304 East Plum Street to remove the trailer that is not allowed to be repaired or anything on site.
Is that on there?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, it's okay to keep your second in that discussion.
So we have a motion and a second to accept Chuck's updates with what's in compliance and what still needs to be done with different property that we're working on. Any further discussion, Derek?
Yeah, I would like to get with Chuck about the 220 Yerick Street place, and I'm happy to send a letter about that. That sounds like a clear. Shouldn't have done it that way. The other, I want to look into that Virgin Avila property. I know that we sent a letter and I talked to Chuck a little bit. I thought things have been remedied, but again, I want to get with him about that before we just go charging forward about that.
I think on that, and you look into, I remember making that motion to approve the repairs on the fence and stuff on that property.
Right.
Nothing on the trailer.
Nothing on the trailer.
And that's where I, I don't have files.
And you'll have to, I don't have it, but you know, exactly. But I do remember making a motion to approve that the fence and stuff been fixed. I don't remember releasing the trailer.
I mean, I appreciate his concerns and if there's still things that need to be done that haven't been done, let's look into that.
That trailer's been junked for years.
Also Lisa, on Yerick Avenue. He had a, the way I understand, I maybe I'm going to use the wrong word, he had a fence that didn't meet our code. So can we put that in?
He tore the fence down. He did, he tore the fence down and then he boxed in his front porch.
Right.
And leaned rail up against his house, so the dog had a little track to run down to the side of his house. Now he has added a whole covered porch?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, it's a whole covered porch.
It's a room.
And that's.
It's actually a room. He's got furniture in there, TV.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, you know, he knew.
But the fence is back in, the fence is not a problem.
The fence is not a problem anymore, no.
Take down the fence and build a room.
It's just been, and he did bring me in when he found out, when I think Steve Howard paid him a visit and that he said that, hey, you don't have a building permit. He applied for that building permit, he came in here and he gave me the application. And that's all it was, was an application. But he was never approved for a building permit because it didn't meet our setbacks. He was told to stop as far as I know and didn't.
Okay.
So he has had some communication on it, but again.
Okay. All right, so we've got the motion, we've got the second, we've had our comments, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Derek gave two letters, sir.
I'm sorry?
I said, then you had those two letters, so, well, I guess you're going to talk to Chuck.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I'm going to get with Chuck and figure out a game plan on those guys.
Claims. Lisa.
I know, I get it. Okay, so the claims for this meeting are from August 2nd until August the 15th. And they're for $525,090.41. And this time I actually included all the ACH numbers and the EFT numbers. I'll probably see that change, if you notice, but it just gives you the numbers of the claims for ACH and EFTs. You always get them in your reports, but I don't think you've ever noticed the numbers on them, so I just attach them to the front sheet.
I make a motion to approve the claims from 8/22/22 to 8/15/22 for a total of $525,090.41.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept the claims from 8/22/22 to 8/15/22 for the amount of $525,090.41.
That zero message.
Yeah, zero, we left that out. So anyhow, any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Claims have passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, yeah.
Hey, I'm hungry.